We need. We know that, you know that very animals are small.
There you go.
There you go.
We don't want to count the animal.
We want them when they stop.
Yes.
I know how to do fast.
See this?
Yes, sir. Right there. I mean, I just, I mean, I'm trying to succeed.
Why do they need a?
I mean, you know, sir, I mean, I have to sort of resolve.
How to be sad?
Well, see, that's, uh, uh.
Well.
Take her to the doctor. Not, not this over here.
So, I don't know, but you're gonna ask.
The mayor's money.
We don't want your people hurt. That way you're conceding. Oh, and I also told that you don't turn this in. Oh, by the way, you can see the county has an ordinance. I didn't want to tell you, but they take my law. But I mean, if you call me, I just. But I mean, he didn't bother me. He did for the five hours, he said, for several years. When he signed his warnings in from say. I've had miles all about like six, ninety-six. I get all my mail. It won't be able to do that. But I mean, it's a well. I have some doubt about it. I'm not going to waste time. So what y'all would think, you got to roll over and say hello. You don't have a good choice.
I can, I can, I can do that somebody else.
It's terrible.
Oh, dude.
Obviously.
Why?
Well, right now it hasn't. But you know, it's a, that's a month. Now that, that I could play out, then you have same ones. What you gotta do? Well, I, I, I. Well, and the mayor can't get exactly. When you see, he's been nominated. If you like, what about ours? I love. I'm sorry. Well, I mean, I do have a little back. I know how I work each other. No, I'm, I'm. Now, they, they told me the reason they have short meetings Monday is because I wasn't here. So they said. As we said, the reason they have short meetings is because I wasn't here. They didn't want me to show up.
I'm like, I'm like, make it work.
Where?
Well, our, our, they were still watching. Pushing it to blow you like.
It's not the real job.
Oh, so you said he's a friend.
Hey, I love it. Somebody's, somebody's gonna ask some more questions.
Right.
You want to.
I says, let's begin. Do you have questions? Wait. You say. We do have a question. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
This is making sure. Yeah, we have such. They lean back. I wish their chair would not lean back.
Okay, it's February fourteenth. Regular Caddo Parish Commission meeting to order. Mr. Clark, could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Hopkins.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Talafaro.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Chavez.
Here, sir.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Apperson. Give seven of twelve members present. That is a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Commissioner Stormy Gage Watts, I hadn't given you heads up, but would you be kind enough to do the invocation for us? And Commissioner Chavez, would you do the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Everyone, please stand.
Let us pray. O God, have we awfully come before your throne of grace and mercy, Lord, thanking you, Father God, for this day that you have given us, oh Lord. God, we invoke your presence into this meeting, oh Lord, and we ask, Father God, that you will give us the guidance and the wisdom to make the best decisions for the citizens of Caddo Parish. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. If everyone, please face the flag. If you are a uniform or a veteran, you may render the hand and brow salute. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Gage Watts. Thank you, Commissioner Chavez.
And that brings us to agenda additions, where there is one, if, if you don't see it on your screen, if you want, if you would refresh your digital agenda, you'll see a potential agenda addition. It is from Commissioner Chavez, and it's a special resolution for Dr. Russell Ledet. Dr. Ledet is the Black History Month speaker for LSU S., and he is going to be here before our next meeting, so, so Commissioner Chavez asked that we put that on today's agenda.
Motion to expand the agenda and add the agenda addition.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Commissioner Chavez to expand and add the agenda addition. Do we then, do we take comments now, or is that after we vote?
Uh, you can, you can take public comments now. Open the public.
Okay.
Public hearing now, and then see if there's anyone for.
We will open the floor for comments from, from the public regarding if, if, if there's anyone opposed to or in favor of this agenda addition. If you are opposed to this agenda addition, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Okay, now we're ready to vote?
We are. Okay, and that motion carries with seven in support, and that item will become eight point three on your agenda. And that brings us to the next item on the agenda today, which is the citizens' comments. Citizens are asked to fill out a comment card in the lobby or online for the meeting and return them to either myself or the president, and I have received one so far that have passed along, and that is all that I've received so far.
Okay, we, we have Mr. Timothy Magnner here from the Shreveport Chamber. Please come forward, Mr. Magnner. Thank you for coming to visit with us today. What's on your mind?
Thank you. I wanted to speak in regard to ordinance sixty-two hundred, which were about the creation of a temporary Metropole Planning Board for Caddo Parish. Many of our members who are involved in development in the area have projects that are currently in limbo because of the lack of a procedural mechanism to be able to move those forward, and I encourage the commission to, to do what it can to develop. I know there's a lot of moving parts with this, but if we can have some clear pathway for folks to move existing projects forward while we deliberate on the appropriate mechanisms for, for long-term progress, that would be very, very, very beneficial, and I think critically important to the ongoing development within Caddo Parish. So I encourage that, and if there's anything we at the chamber can do to help facilitate or support that, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Magnner, for sharing your thoughts on that important matter, and thank you for coming to the commission.
Thank you.
All right.
Seeing no other requests for public comments, we'll move along. There are no scheduled visitors today, so that brings us to adopting regular session minutes.
So move to adopt.
We have a motion by Commissioner Chavez, I believe, a second by Commissioner Young to accept the regular session minutes. May we please vote? Whoops, I hit the wrong button there. I've got to kind of weave through my equipment to get to the buttons.
All right, that motion carries with seven in support and none in opposition, and that brings us to special resolutions, where you have three items today. The first item, and I believe we do have the recipient and family present, is a special resolution of recognition and appreciation for Christopher Thomas, Jr.
So move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Chavez, a second by Commissioner Young to adopt a special resolution for Chris Thomas. Commissioner Chavez, would you like to take the floor and speak on this motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll go down there. Thank you guys for your support.
All right, and if you would like, I'll go ahead and read this into the record for you. And this is a resolution of recognition for Christopher Thomas, Jr. Whereas the Caddo Parish Commission is always pleased to recognize and honor those sons and daughters of Caddo Parish who have gone forth to gain singular and outstanding personal achievements, and in so doing reflects favorably and positively upon the home, their home community. And whereas Mr. Christopher Thomas, Jr., a Shreveport native and senior at Calvary Baptist Academy, has been honored to be an important part of the Calvary Baptist football team that brought Calvary its third state title and first title for Coach Rodney Ewan during the 2020 season. His latest accomplishments include his participation in the Dream All-American Bowl, played in January 2022 at the AT&amp;T Stadium in Arlington, Texas. Whereas the Dream All-American Bowl is a high school football all-star showcase with players from across the country, sponsored by Recruit Nation and Dream Scouting Network, and broadcast to a national audience. The game and related events were held over Martin Luther King Junior Weekend as a celebration of the excellence, commitment, and sacrifice made to the players and their, made by the players and their families. And whereas Mr. Thomas has served the offensive line with pride as the right tackle, but he has also demonstrated that he's more than his accomplishments that he earns as number fifty-three on the team. He's also a humble leader who is as known for his work ethic and compassion as he is for clearing the way for teammates to shine on the field. Thomas's leadership recently won him another kind of contest when his design won AFS Logistics Christmas Card Contest, resulting in a large donation to his school and a special lunch that he was able to share with his classmates. Whereas a combination of Thomas's leadership, love of athleticism, and dedication to his learning and knowledge have led him to pursue a career in sports medicine and athletic training at Louisiana State University in Baton Rouge. Thomas has been honored to have the support of his family, community, teammates, and classmates during his high school football career, with the especially meaningful support of his mother, Ms. Kamisha Jackson, and older sister Christina Thomas. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission and legal and regular session this seventeenth day of February, 2022, that it does hereby extend its most sincere and heartfelt expressions of congratulations and appreciation to Mr. Christopher Thomas, Jr. for his praiseworthy achievements and for representing Caddo Parish with such admirable strength and dedication to excellence while playing in the Dream All-American Bowl. Be it further resolved that the Caddo Parish Commission asks all citizens to join in celebrating Mr. Thomas's accomplishments and wish him continued success in his future endeavors.
Christopher, I just want to congratulate you guys. You can all be seated. This is a monumental achievement. Who cares about the Super Bowl? The All-American Dream Bowl and one of our own went to go play there. Congratulations. It's, it's, it was cool hearing your mom and all the cool stuff that you're doing there. My own son goes to Calvary and just, I know what you've done there, so it's incredible, and it's great to celebrate one of our own. So I wanted to give the opportunity for you to have the mic, if you wanted to tell the commissioners about the Dream Bowl, about your experience there, and what you thought about that whole thing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Dream All-American Bowl, it's basically a high school showcase where high school seniors can show off their talents to prospective coaches and earn scholarships, and this year it was held at AT&amp;T Stadium in Arlington, yeah, AT&amp;T Stadium in Arlington, Texas. Next year, I think it's gonna be at SoFi Stadium, so they're doing big things, and I was on the Dream Team, which was the black team. Sadly, we didn't come out on top, but I also got the leadership award for, for my team, and our coaches, they were all former NFL players and high school coaches from the area, and I was just blessed and honored to be given the opportunity to play, and yeah.
Amen.
Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Thomas, we got a couple of comments. Commissioner Gage Watts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations on all of your accomplishments, and congratulations to my classmate, your mother, Ms. Kamisha Jackson. It's so good to see you, and I'm so proud of the great things that you're doing, continuing to keep going on this path that you're on, and greatness shall surely follow you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Commissioner Talafaro.
Mr. Thomas, I had one, one question, first of all. What are you doing down at LSU right now, other than your academics? Are we playing sports?
Yes, sir, I will be.
You will be?
Yes, sir.
All right, just, I just wanted to make sure. And also, and I've said this before at the commission for people that come to the horseshoe, leader's responsibility is to build other leaders.
Yes, sir.
Your, your responsibility is to find your voice and help others find theirs.
Yes, sir.
And we are so proud of you. Thank you for being one of Shreveport's own, and we're looking forward to many great things for you in the future. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And seeing no one else on the board, I'll just add, Mr. Thomas, thank you so much for what you've done for your community here. Thank you for your leadership. Please continue your strong work ethic. Apply it to your sports, but also apply it to the classroom, and remember you need to prepare not only for the next ten years, but for the next twenty or thirty years, so thank the long term. Work hard and continue to make progress. We're very proud of you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
I can't thank you enough. Chavez, I say, Stormy, all the great work that you ladies and gentlemen do. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, is there anyone here from the Hicks family?
Not today. We will present the, that resolution to members of the fam, the family, but it, by mail.
Okay.
But they're not here to receive it today. There, there is a possibility you have a visitor at your next meet, work session that is with the Community Foundation, and we did discuss perhaps presenting it to that visitor, but as Ms. Hicks did leave some substantial.
Resources.
Gifts to the Community Foundation to continue her, her habit of being a benefactor.
Okay, if you'll just keep us in the loop on that.
Absolutely, will do. And so that is the next item on the agenda, is the special resolution of remembrance for Bobby Kate Hicks. The other item in this section is a special resolution for Mr. Russell Ledet, Dr. Russell Ledet, I'm sorry.
Move to englobo both items.
Second.
We have a move to englobo and adopt both item eight point two and eight point three. The motion was made by Commissioner Stormy Gage Watts and seconded by Commissioner Lazarus. Any, anybody in favor of that by acclamation? Seeing no one, no concerns? Commissioner Chavez, did you, do you need to do anything for Doc, regarding Dr. Ledet?
Uh, no, just make the motion.
Okay, the motion's been made and.
I'm, I'm for it.
Yeah, and I think we all accept that by acclamation. Okay, there's no, no one from Dr. Ledet's group here, then?
No, I'll, I'll give you a quick recap. She, she was at the minority department at the LSU, and she reached out asking if we could do this for next week, but she did it yesterday, so obviously we had to expedite the process, get on the agenda today, vote for it, as opposed to doing it next week and then ratify it the week after. I'd rather it get done beforehand.
Okay.
That's why we're seeing it today.
Okay, thank you.
If y'all have a minute, I would, I would interject that this gentleman's story is pretty interesting, too, so you may want to take a minute and read it, because sometimes you, you can glean past a point, but, and this one's an interesting story.
Okay.
Okay, did you want to move along?
Yes, please.
Okay, that brings us to communiques and committee reports, where we have an administration response for information request from commissioners.
All right, let's first, let's take communiques. Did I, you, you were on the board, but you're off, nothing from you, Stormy?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to let all the commissioners know that we're gonna have a Animal Services Committee meeting on February twenty-third. Is that right, Mr. Clark?
Correct.
At ten AM?
I think it was at eleven?
At eleven AM, and right before that, we're gonna have a Personnel Policy and Procedures Committee meeting at ten AM on the twenty-third.
That's fine.
And it's to discuss some issues that have arisen around the horseshoe, and the agendas will come out from the clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else on the board. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just got the administrator, you gonna give her a report on the update, so I hold my questions till I get that report.
Okay.
On, on the what? I'm gonna hold my questions until I hear your report.
Okay, Commissioner Gage Watts.
Yes, there will be Juvenile Justice Committee meeting on Thursday, the twenty-fourth, at eleven AM.
Are you looking for confirmation?
Mr. Clark, yes, I heard those other two on Wednesday.
I, I just heard it. Thank you, I'm sorry. I was writing it down.
Thank you.
I didn't know if you were talking to me or saying it out loud.
Yes, both.
What time did you want that on the twenty-fourth, Commissioner?
Eleven AM.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get the, seeing no one else on the board, Dr. Wilson, would you like to share your report with us, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, commissioners. Good to see you all today. The first item I had to brief to use, the relocation of the, of the monument, and we just got the con, we contract back this morning from the contractor with some changes he'd like to make in the contract, so we are gonna review to get it back to him, hopefully then get it signed shortly thereafter. So we received the contract this morning, we're making, going over for his, his corrections that he made to the contract, and we will press to get signed ASAP, move things forward. U.S. Treasury reported, in the ERAP program, we're still waiting funds from the Treasury. We haven't gotten any funds yet. We still get a lot of calls every day, but, you know, we out of money, and as you all know, we've dispensed about thirty-five million dollars entirely with the program, so we're subject to federal additional funds that we do not have at this time. Also, we, in detention, we have nineteen children, two OJJ, and we have eleven children at CCC. The COVID response, we had no reported COVID cases this past week, but for the last two weeks of January, we had three cases in our organization and eight between the agency organizations like the sheriff and the DA, and also the registered bull's office. Facebook, we're still working on Facebook issues, and we are also talking to the city of Shreveport about reactivating the public access channel, so we can scream our meetings over that, over that medium as well. So that's pretty concise of my report. If you have any questions, I'll do that entertaining for you.
Okay.
Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Where do we stand on the, you know, last year we voted to, for juveniles services to utilize the watch monitors? What do we stand, stand on that? Because I hadn't heard any updates on that.
Okay.
I need to get an update. Mr. Clay, you want to give us an update, sir? Did you hear the question, Clay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have actually not been able yet to, to get those watches. I don't know if it's a supply chain issue. We have an agreement, but we do not have them in-house yet. We still do have all the ankle monitors we need, but we don't yet have those watch monitors. We have not had those come in yet.
So the vendor y'all selected doesn't have the watches in stock?
That's the last I heard, is we were unable to get them.
Okay. I'd like to revisit what we talked about initially with the, the other vendor. I know that vendor had some issues, but at the same time, if there's other parishes and other counties utilizing that same vendor, I see why we shouldn't. So I'll, I'll be pushing to see what opportunities that we can do that, because it's just a pilot program. We're not signing, you know, lifelong agreement. It's just a pilot program to see if this is more being beneficial, and maybe by that time, your, your vendor that you selected now may have, may, may be able to get those watches in, but, you know, if it's new technology out there, we should be trying to utilize it to make the jobs of the people who are actually out there working day in and day out with, with those juveniles a lot easier. And it, the watches, from what I've been told, has a lot more features than the ankle monitors, because you can set parameters, because the watch is just like a GPS, and you can set the param, parameters of where that person can go and cannot go, and once they exceed, exceed that, then at that point, they get a call, why are you outside of your area? And we know where you are, and you need to get back in, or if they've already given that warning, then they're then dispatching somebody to go get them, so I just think that that's something that we should be looking at and exploring. That's all I have on that. Thank you. The signs. That's all I have on that. Thank you. The signs on the interstate?
Yes, sir.
They breaking ground on them, or what we're going with those?
No, sir. We did request a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, and we didn't get the date, so we can sit around the table to find out what the ends and outs is going to be regarding that project.
Okay.
And also, I understand we have requested to do a press release from one of our commissioners as well. So we'll do that when we get a date, when they're going to actually start the project.
Okay. The NGOs and ARP CEAs, how are we looking on those?
Okay. All right. Does there want to give an update?
I can update on the ARP. We are working now to have someone on board to review those just to manage expectations. ARP will take some time. You all have approved various different types of programs, and it's going to take us some time to be able to analyze all those different ones and determine whether or not, one, that they're eligible. Two, can they meet the requirements of the ARP guidelines, because it is extensive. We would have to sign a detailed CA that outlines, because these organizations will be considered sub-receipients under federal guidelines. They are not, that is not similar to the NGO process. So it will be very detailed, and we are working through it. But it will take us some time also. We're not expecting a second tranche of money until May. And so some of these larger ones, we would have to know that we had those, that second pot of money to really know what the scope of the project can be, if all we have. We just want to make sure we have that second pot of money. So we are working on it. We are looking at working with a consultant to help us with that, and those fees can be borne by the ARP dollars.
All right. Can we put something like that on the website, so people will know?
We are talking with every individual, that every organization that you have. So we could, something on the website is for general consumption, and we have specific organizations that we're working with in regards to ARP. But we have been in communication with the ones that you have identified. There are some monies that you actually identified organizations, but we are communicating with those organizations.
So the ones that we did approve funds, you have been in contact with them?
Yes.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Johnson, you know, for example, the National Development Council will be vetting all the housing applicants for us, and they're developing an application process for us right now, and we're reviewing that. So every organization that's used ARP funds must be vetted. So as we mentioned, we will vet them through the housing component. The National Development Council has been chosen to be our consultant over that. So they involve in that process as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. What about the NGO process?
It's moving along fine. All of the new ones have either gotten agreements or had them, or been contacted for additional information. And as the other reports are going through their financial review, they go through a legal review about 48 hours after that, and a CEA is sent.
Okay, thank you. I just want the public to know where we are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Young?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
On Monday, one of my constituents came in and asked about the charter amendments that we had approved for putting on the ballot at some point in the future. He was concerned that they might be put on the ballot later than they needed to be. What, could you remind us what the charter amendments are, when they're supposed to be on the ballot, and if that's as soon as they can be put on the ballot?
Okay.
Commissioner, I would have to send you the amendments, because I don't have them in front of me. They can be put on the ballot at any time you all passing ordinance by two, excuse me, yeah, two-thirds, to put them on the ballot. So it depends on what ballot you want them on.
I see, sir.
But you all have never passed an ordinance to have us put them on the ballot yet.
So that depends entirely on us. It's not, okay. So in that case, Attorney Frasier, would you prepare an ordinance to put those on the ballot at our spring election?
It's too late.
It's too late?
It's too late.
At the next election, when it's, when we're already having an election?
The primary.
Great, that's fine.
Okay.
And just get it rolling.
The next election that we are already going to be on, have something on the ballot.
With the next election that's already taking place, so we don't have to fund a special election just for these.
Yeah, we have renewals this fall, so it'll be a pretty good time.
So we'll put it on that one?
Yeah, put it on the ballot on that time.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you for doing that. All right. Let's see. Commissioner Gage Watts, second time, I guess?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is my first time speaking on an administration report.
Okay.
I would just ask Mrs. Bryan if she would give us an update on the ring doorbells, and just give the constituents and the citizens who are listening where we are in the process.
Yes, ma'am. We are right now getting quotes to purchase the doorbells, install them, as well as the annual one-year monitoring costs. And when I say monitoring, just enough to be able to maintain the video. We should be receiving those quotes within the next few days, and we hope to start beginning accepting applications within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you. And those applications will be via electronic, as well as hard copies will be available for those who are not tech savvy?
Yes, it will be on a first-come, first-served basis.
Okay. Thank you so much. Clay, I want you to sit down, because I knew it would be a while. Director Walker, if you would, have some questions about juvenile. And I know you gave a overview on Monday. Most of us were not here due to conference. If you would, just give us an update. I know Dr. Wilson gave us the numbers of where we are today in the juvenile detention center, and just talk about how those numbers fluctuate often.
Certainly. Just to clarify, we have 24 beds. On a regular basis, normally, we have an average of 19 a day. And what will happen is that you'll have two children arrested today. Meanwhile, the others, they're in detention, as we said, they're 19 in today. They'll have court hearings. Some will be scheduled during the week. A few kids may be scheduled to go to a group home, some scheduled to go to juvenile prison, unfortunately. Some will be in, having received a punishment. They got two weeks in detention as a punishment, and that two weeks will run out. So on a daily basis, two or three are leaving, and we may get none in, and we may get four in on one event. And so it's a constantly moving number. And our job is we communicate to the judges, when a new child comes in, a series of questions that the judges ask. What's the charge they came in on? What's their history? How old are they? What's going on in the home? They'll ask a series of questions. We answer those, and then we alert them to the number, our capacity. We're at 22. And from that, the judges make a decision about what they're going to do with those children. So as I say, it is a constantly moving number, but it's something that we deal with on a regular basis.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we addressed that today, and we'll follow up more about it, about the assessments, about some of the questions that other commissioners has asked for information on. For example, what we are doing at other parishes inside of Louisiana who does not have a juvenile detention center. So I just wanted you to come up today and to just shed some light on where we are in the detention center, and to make sure that we're not overcrowded at this point.
Sure, happy to. And I'll bring more of that information I can bring to the juvenile justice committee meeting on 24th.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
That's it, Mr. Frisberg.
Thank you, Commissioner Gage Watts. Commissioner Clark, did you have a point to make?
Oh, I just was going to, and I can, if Commissioner Johnson would like to go first, certainly defer to him, but I was just going to answer that question about what the charter amendments were. If anybody was curious, you want me to go ahead and?
Go ahead.
Okay, that was, that was the question that was asked previously. Those three charter amendments that were passed are, one is related to presidential disasters, I mean, presidential power when declaring a disaster. One is related to meeting during a declared disaster, and the third is the elimination or the consolidation of the fleet department. And so those are the three items.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. I guess this is more of a question for us than administration. Since I've been as commissioner, we've had a couple of citizens advisory boards. And all of these citizens advisory boards, you know, we'll select some citizens, they go and they meet, and they discuss stuff, then they come back with recommendations. A lot of the recommendations never leave from the paper that they put them on. We never implement half of them. But from all of the committees that I've seen, there's always input of one direction or another. So they end up being biased instead of unbiased. And so what's the purpose? I mean, you might as well let us sit around the horseshoe and debate the issue, vote on it, majority rule, and they go. Instead of wasting citizens' time with, you know, some people telling the people on the committee this, some people on the committee telling the people that. They sit there and hash it all out, and then they go through a round of debates, then they put some recommendations down, and then they bring it to us. Well, we already have our mindset on what we was going to do anyway, because that's the reason why you said it to a citizens advisory council, saying that, well, we just going to delay this and wipe our hands with it, and let them do it. And then next thing you know, they come back with recommendations that we pretty much heard while we was up here. Some change a little bit, but same general information. And then we'd have voted up and down. So really, you're wasting citizens' time. Of all the committees that I've seen, it's been a waste of time. When we did the one with the Confederate monument, that was a waste of time. Did one on the planning committee, that was a waste of time. We got one going now with the juvenile area, and I believe that's going to come back as a waste of time. Why do that? Why we just don't have the meetings ourselves, debate it, majority rules, and keep going? That's just a question for us. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Good point. Dr. Wilson?
Yes, sir. President, I forgot to mention to you all that at your station, there should be a letter indicating that we have a change in procedure regarding COVID response effective tomorrow. There's no requirement to wear masks indoors in any parish facilities starting tomorrow morning, and I just want to make you aware of that. We typically follow the governor's guidance on this matter. The governor rolled back the requirement to wear masks in all state buildings, and we are following suit.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hopkins?
I just wanted to make a reply back to Commissioner Johnson, you know, and I understand where you're coming from. But it's the one time that citizens get to voice and maybe feel like they're part of the process. One committee that was very important to the commission was when we changed to the police jury, from a police jury to the commission, we went for a charter advisory committee. And that's how that was built over time. And it took, it wasn't just a committee for six months. It was about two years' worth. But there was a lot of problems with buy-in to the old police jury, and this was an opportunity. They didn't make, yeah, this is what's going to happen, but they brought back ideas and things. And maybe we do get lost sometimes. We're all kind of set in our ways, and we're busy. We've got so many issues. It's sometimes good to give it to other eyes and let them see if they can find some ways to at least bring to us to look at. Whether we're going to agree with them or not, you're, we probably don't. That happens. We know that. But it gives them an opportunity to have a buy-in, is all I say.
Okay. I take that as an answer.
All right. Commissioner Gage Watts?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will add to that, that we certainly don't, I agree with what Commissioner Hopkins said, and we surely don't want the citizens to perceive that we are wasting their time. We do know that their time is very valuable, and they were appointed to these different committees to give us those recommendations, as you've mentioned, and as Commissioner Hopkins has mentioned as well, for us to take them into consideration, or how we can improve, or, you know, what should be eliminated. But I do believe that their voices are essential to a lot of decisions that we make, and they should be at the table if we're making decisions about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Young?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, also in response regarding the citizens advisory committee on planning, I was surprised at some of the recommendations that they brought back, which suggested that we use a different scheme of land use regulation other than zoning to regulate uses in our parish the way they do in Houston, which I hadn't even heard of before. So it was very valuable to me, and I don't think of it as a waste of time, especially since they had a perspective of rural residency that was underrepresented on the current MPC planning board. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Young. All right. Any other communiquees or committee reports? Seeing none. Commissioner Clark?
Do you want to move along? Did you have a president's report?
I'll make a few brief statements. One, I'd like to thank Public Works for working with the city and finally kicking off the red light at Southern Loop and Wallace Lake Road. I know that's important for people down in southeast Shreveport and people that bike up and down Wallace Lake Road. So thank you for kicking off some work on an important safety feature down there. And then regarding the temporary rural planning and zoning board that's on, that's pending on our agenda, as Mr. Magnner has stated, and as we've seen from letters from SWEPCO and other businesses in our community, there is a need for some temporary, at minimum, temporary solution to the zoning and planning issues that we have out in the parish. You know, we're just looking at a temporary solution right now. We don't have to solve every problem right now. So I would encourage us, as we move forward, to keep that in mind as we look at Commissioner Chavez and Johnson's proposal that's currently
Bipartisan.
On our agenda. Pardon?
Bipartisan.
Bipartisan. The bipartisan ordinance that's on our agenda. That's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
All right. And that brings us, the next item is public hearing on zoning ordinances and cases. We have none scheduled today, so we'll move forward to the public hearing on ordinances, where we have two today. If you'd like, I'll go ahead and read those, and then you can open the public hearing.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. That is 12.1, is the public hearing for ordinance number 6191 of 2022. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the riverboat fund and the oil and gas fund in the amount of $10,000 to provide an appropriation for the Louisiana Advocates for Immigrants in Detention associated with the Highland Center and otherwise provided with respect thereto. The next item is 12.2, a public hearing for ordinance number 6193 of 2022. That's an ordinance creating the I-49 North Corridor Economic Development District, state of Louisiana, defining the boundaries thereof from which area local sales tax, property tax, and hotel occupancy tax increments will be determined and used to finance economic development projects in accordance with and as authorized by Part II of Chapter 27 of Title 33 of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950 as amended, and providing for other matters in connection with the foregoing.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up the agenda for public hearings on number 6191 and number 6193. Is there anyone in the chamber to speak in favor of or against ordinance number 6191 or 6193? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Okay, Mr. Clark?
Okay, that brings us to zoning ordinances. We obviously have none there, so we will go on to ordinances for final passage. And the first item that we have today is 14.1. That's ordinance number 6191 of 2022 that you just had a public hearing on. That's the ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the riverboat fund and oil and gas fund in the amount of $10,000 to provide an appropriation for the Louisiana Advocates for immigrants.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Young, and a second from Commissioner Talafaro.
Second, sorry.
A little weak voice from Commissioner Talafaro. Commissioner Young, would you like to comment on your, on this resolution?
No, Mr. President. I think we've discussed it to everyone's satisfaction, and it's been through the NGO committee. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments here? Seeing no one on the board, let's vote, please. Seeing no one on the board, let's vote, please.
And that motion carries with aid and support and none in opposition. That brings us to the next item, which is ordinance number 6193 of 2022. That's the ordinance creating the I-49 North Corridor Economic Development District in the state of Louisiana, defining the boundaries thereof from which local sales tax, property tax, and hotel occupancy tax increments will be determined and used to finance economic development projects in accordance with and as authorized by Part II of Chapter 27 of Title 33 of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950 as amended, and providing for other matters in connection with the foregoing.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hopkins.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Young. Commissioner Hopkins, would you like to comment on your motion?
This is the 7.49 acres at Interstate I-49 and Highway 2 around the Hallscena area. This is also part of the pilot program for that truck stop, so this is the ability to have a sales tax to help finance some of the infrastructure in the future.
All right. Anyone, Commissioner, pardon me, Attorney Frazier?
I just wanted to double check with the clerk that the resolution, giving notice that the commission was gonna adopt this, has been published twice in the official journal.
I believe it has, I can double check that to make sure, but I, we do keep the, now I will say, the reason I hesitate is because I'm not sure if I have received the affidavit, but we have seen it printed, so.
Okay.
It's been printed. We'll double check that for you.
I propose we go ahead and vote, vote on it, if we have to come back and re-vote, if it's obsolete or, you know, inappropriate, we can bring it back onto the agenda. Commissioner Hopkins, are you okay with that?
I mean, whatever legal things we need to do, I don't wanna, do we need to, do we need to?
If you want, I can go, I can go double check that real quick.
Okay. If you would delay.
I can just go physically look for it, if y'all don't mind.
All right, stand by.
If you do it and it has been done, you start that going. I don't, I don't want you to start that going. Do we need to move to recess or five minutes?
That'll be fine, I don't know how long it'll take him, is there a motion to recess?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Hopkins?
I'll go for that.
Five-minute recess, please be back in five minutes.
It's, just to let y'all know, it has been published in the official journal. It has, yes.
All right. Stand by.
If it was during the document, I'm actually, I was like, oh, she's 25 minutes.
No reason for you to get out.
So, John, this is the only one that you have to treat that way?
Yes. I mean, you don't know, districts, they always have to do that. They have, it has, that resolution has to be published twice in just the official journal before the ordinance is adopted.
I'd like to mark it.
And I don't, off the top of my head, I think the answer is, I don't, whatever they do affects us.
Well, like, I didn't have any public hearings before, and I've just had intros on, like, this previous version, but this is like the one that went out. I think you just had them read.
But it was, it was.
And all the patents are still there, just in different places.
Exactly. It will be, yeah.
So it was published November 25th, 2022.
With the maps and everything.
Okay. Yeah. I spoke to Link. Yeah, they got the five-minute clock going.
It was published twice, we still don't have the affidavits, but it's not, but it was, we do have the.
I just wanted to make sure so we wouldn't have to start all over.
Yeah, totally.
Since they didn't adopt the resolution until the third, I wanted to make sure.
It was published, I believe, in between December 11th.
This is because the battle is a change. This is the new map and the new resolution.
Well, look, I saw, I thought about.
That they adopted on February 3rd, Mr. Magner.
Alyssa, I got an email today. We got something for them.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we need to relax.
And it was like, if you had someone interested in math and science magnet, I would like to say.
Unless you got the last two newspapers to look at already.
Or, you know, whether it was on that, I was looking, I had a call to check read that. She called me, so I had to look up the number for the 10. But if we print it, it probably here, last week was probably the first.
Today's paper.
I thought that resolution said the March the 3rd was the first.
Commissioner Hopkins, will you make the motion if you would like?
Sure.
We're not back in session yet.
That's why, why is it on today? You got it, that's correct. Well, I mean, it's, we don't vote on it today. Did we have, can you verify what the public hearing date that was advertised?
The public hearing day for it.
I've got it.
Because we can't, we can't, for sure, it's in today's paper. None of us have seen it yet.
We don't have a quorum.
Yeah.
Thank you. You don't have to, they ask, they give them, they have to talk to me, you know, be church. Hey, Todd, the public hearing for it must be March the 3rd.
Huh?
You're taking it. Taking it.
The public hearing for the office, March the 3rd.
Yeah, but they have masks, obviously, you can't go to the mix, the mix, the mix. No, they have to feed into that, and then, and then make some liquid, and say, good all, that's what it says.
You got too big of a bag.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Clerk, can you poke your head in there? We've got nine seconds. I'd like to call this Caddo Parish Commission meeting back into session. Where are we, Mr. Clerk?
So we are at ordinance number 6193, and again, we had, we took recess in order to verify the notification process of this. Of course, with these TIP districts, there is an extended notification process. We had advertised for, and met the advertising requirements for the initial map, but there was a change to the map, and one advertisement has been done, but there is still another advertisement required, and the ordinance itself contemplates.
Move to postpone this to our next regular session.
Second.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion from Commissioner Johnson to postpone to our next regular session, and a second by Commissioner Hopkins. All right, we're good to vote on that? Any questions? All right, let's vote.
All right, that motion carries with aid and support and none in opposition.
Let me pause one minute, Mr. Clerk. Attorney Frazier, thank you for catching that, we appreciate it. All right, carry on.
Okay, that brings us to zoning ordinances for introduction by title, of which we have none. The next item is ordinances for introduction by title, where you have a number of items today, the first being the introduction of ordinance number 6194 of 2022. That's an ordinance to accept the streets in Old Town Subdivision Unit 1 into the parish of Caddo road system and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is to introduce ordinance number 6195 of 2022. That's an ordinance to accept the streets in Blanchard Lake Estates, Unit 4 into the parish of Caddo's road system and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is to introduce ordinance number 6196 of 2022. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues for the American Rescue Plan Fund to provide an appropriation for Juvenile Center in Caddo Parish and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is an ordinance, introduction of ordinance number 6197 of 2022. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the riverboat fund to appropriate funds for the Caddo Park's Grab and Go Feeding Program and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is to introduce ordinance number 6198 of 2022, an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the riverboat fund for the year 2022 to provide an additional appropriation of $15,000 for Robinson's Rescue and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is to introduce ordinance number 6199 of 2022. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the riverboat fund for the year 2022 to provide an appropriation, to provide ballistic vests for Shreveport and Caddo Parish Fire Districts and otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is the introduction of ordinance number 6200 of 2022. That's an ordinance to establish a temporary parish planning and zoning commission to provide for its membership, to provide for an effective date, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is the introduction of ordinance number 6202 of 2022, an ordinance to authorize the administrator to execute any predeals servitude of passage and right to use over parish property located in southwestern quarter of Section 28 Township 22 North Range 16 West and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. The next item is the introduction of ordinance number 6203 of 2022. That's an ordinance to authorize the administrator to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement with Caddo Gathering LLC regarding a pipeline through and under parish property located in Section 7 Township 18 North Range 15 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. And that brings us to work session minutes.
Move to englobo and adopt work session minutes for February the 14th and January the 18th. Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for your motion to englobo and adopt the work session minutes from February 14th and from January 18th. That motion was seconded by Commissioner Young. Let's vote, please.
And that motion carries with aid and support and none in opposition. And that brings us to resolutions, where you have one item to consider today, Resolution Number 20 of 2022 is a resolution confirming participation in Louisiana Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year 2022 Public Facility Improvement Project with Waterworks District Number 7, identifying partners and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Move to adopt.
Motion from Commissioner Hopkins, I'll second it.
I second it.
Oh, you did? Didn't hear it. Seconded by Commissioner Johnson.
Was that you or was it yours?
Lazarus.
Lazarus?
You can ignore it all day, I'm used to it.
The motion from Commissioner Lazarus, the second from Commissioner Johnson, is that right?
Yes.
Everybody happy? Commissioner Lazarus, would you like to comment?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, seeing no, no one on the board, that's an old, that's an old name of yours, isn't it, Attorney Frazier?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no one on the board, let's vote, please.
And that motion carries with aid and support and none in opposition, and that brings us from old business to new business, where we have one item to appoint Mayor James Sims to the Caddo Parish Broadband Committee.
Move.
A motion by Commissioner Hopkins, a second by Commissioner Young. Commissioner Hopkins, would you like to comment on your motion?
Now, this is, this is Mayor Sims from town of Old City. I think when we started discussing this, you know, we each had an appointment, but he also gives us an opportunity to be part of this and bring the perspective from smaller towns. They've got some things they're doing for broadband, and so I think being together would serve us all better off. He'll do a good job.
Thank you. All right, let's vote.
Yeah, of course.
Oh, Commissioner Johnson?
Right. To me, here we go again, and I think we need to be educated on what can and cannot be done on broadband. I guess when you have a committee that's gonna be dedicated to do this, now, we might need to know a high-level deal of what's expected, or what some of the counties or parishes are doing, but to give a, again, a citizens' group the challenge of putting together a broadband for Caddo Parish, and a lot of us don't fully understand what the broadband infrastructure is supposed to be, or what it could look like, or what it shouldn't look like. It's like the blind leading the blind. I would suggest that maybe if we can get administration to get maybe AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or Verizon representative to come in to give us a overview of broadband, the pros and cons, what some of the parishes, what else some of the counties are doing, so that, you know, you can at least intelligently talk to the public about it. I've had some conversations with AT&amp;T about some of the things that they're doing, and, you know, what you don't want to do is do double work, have the committee talking about doing a whole bunch of stuff, and then all of a sudden, it's already been done by AT&amp;T or Verizon or T-Mobile or some other entity. So I just think that we should have some kind of overview about this before this committee is actually put into establishment.
That's a good, that's a good point, Commissioner Johnson. I might ask Commissioner Hopkins, as the chair of the Long Range Planning Committee, to see if, see about having administration help you set up that meeting, and then all of us that wanted to attend could also.
Exactly.
So Commissioner, Dr. Wilson, if you could help Commissioner Hopkins set that up, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, if I can comment on that.
Go ahead.
I think just, you all had appointed Commissioner Burrell to be over the broadband committee already, and we have had several engagements with AT&amp;T and other company providers.
Okay.
We've had several of those meetings, we just hadn't brought the full board into it, and I don't know, Commissioner Burrell maybe had that in plan for us to invite AT&amp;T to come and talk to everybody, because we've already, we've already gotten that presentation. So, anyway.
So, forgive me, Commissioner Hopkins?
No problem.
We'll take it off your agenda, put it back on Commissioner Burrell's agenda.
Yes, sir, so he's been doing a lot of discussion, meeting, and I know he went to a lot of conferences this past weekend, breakout sessions at NACO relative to broadband.
Okay.
So he's done a lot of work, so I would.
That's the best way, thank you. Okay. Where are we with that? So, yes, we had a motion and a second, did we not?
We did.
All right. Commissioner Talafaro, are you still on the board?
Just one quick thing, Mr. President, that I understand that it's not just Caddo that's gonna be affected by this, but there's an opportunity or an association, not only with, well, not only with Caddo, but the citizens or the city of Shreveport and possibly Homeland Security. It's almost like we're all in this big network, and I agree with.
School board as well.
School board as well. So I agree with Commissioner Johnson that I am very confused about what our responsibilities are, where we're going, where are, what's our intent, and again, I don't want to be duplicating effort that someone else is working on and has.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate your input as well, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, I would suggest that, you know, we let Commissioner Burrell bring your discussion to the floor, because there's a lot of work been done already in discussions, and the Louisiana Gumbel Grant closed out in December, AT&amp;T and a lot of other major providers of internet services already applied for those grants.
Right.
And they have entered into agreements with local communities already, assigned MOUs already, so you all appropriated $2 million ARP money for the help out, and I suggested to Commissioner Burrell, let's wait till it does settle to see what Caddo Parish will need to be in the whole process, because a lot of things going on independent of us. We don't, we don't own any services, but a lot's going on, so perhaps to maximize our investment, we gotta wait to see what everybody else has done and what need to be done.
I believe that the will has already been established, when you talk about cable, it's similar to cable, so, I mean, we shouldn't have to redefine the will. We shouldn't have to redefine the wheel when the wheel is already there. Whenever cable was first laid and put into homes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we have seen plans as much as a hundred and fifty pages long. Comcast, AT&T, and others had already put forth their plans to do certain segments of the community, and they are pressing forward, because those grants, we did sign letters of support for those grants, but those are independent of us, just strictly from the state to the service provider, to expand broadband and underserved communities. So I think with all said and done, they need to let us know what would have been done, so we wouldn't have to go back and reduplicate the wheel, because you're talking about a lot, two million dollars won't go very far.
Okay. We're good? All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Motion carries with aid and support and none in opposition, and that brings us to communiques and reports.
Excuse me, Mr. Clerk, there's, there's no, yeah, there's no citizens' comments on this, on this agenda.
I do apologize, probably.
All right, so let's, let's inject that in here, if we may. We have one, one ticket from a very patient Mr. Muhammad. Come on up, Mr. Muhammad.
I can make a motion and suspend the rules to allow to break and do citizens' comments now, so we.
Well, it should be on the agenda.
But if it wasn't, if it wasn't advertised, I don't think we can do it.
It is a regular part of your agenda, so, I mean, it is, it is, it doesn't, your agenda wouldn't need to be expanded.
The motion is in order.
All right, all right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Chavez, a second by Commissioner Young to.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and inject the citizens' comments into this agenda. Would you like to speak on your, on your motion?
Parliamentary procedure.
All right. Let's, let's vote on that, please. I guess I should have gotten comments from the floor, but.
All right, that motion carries with seven in support.
All right, thank you. Hello, Mr. Muhammad. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, Mr. President. Man, I'm kind of disappointed that only a small portion of you here are doing this quorum. I come to, I come to speak today because I was, after listening to the public comments at the meeting two weeks ago, I was in a state of disgust.
You'll have to remind us what topic you.
Oh, it happened to be, you said what now? I'm sorry.
What topic was being.
I'm sorry. Just, it was in public comments. It was when the Caddo Alliance of Freedom was, was speaking the other night. The first thing that I heard was the name of Dr. Edward Jones was questioned. That's why was his name being attached to the Edward Jones Trust Fund, and I was insulted because a man that, that pastored in this community for fifty, for fifty-seven years, a man that redeveloped Galilee City, a man that was an Alpha Man, graduated from Grand State University, gave so much to this community, was being questioned. And people might say, well, what does it matter? It matters because these are our leaders. And, and I heard, I believe, a former state senator talking about the city of Shreveport as it was a sewage, and I took that as dogism, to demean, belittle, and define and describe black males that seem, seemingly look like they're in a state of peril with so-called black-on-black homicides. And, and when you destroy positive black images like Dr. Edward Jones, this is, this is, this is what, this is what you get. You get a youth that doesn't have anything to pull up on. So I was disgusted about that, and to the description of the city of Shreveport being a sewage. You know, I want to remind the state senator, the former state senator, and the Caddo Alliance of Freedom that it was the citizens in the Cooper Road area in nineteen sixty acting as they, acting governing authority on the sewer, sewer district number five, because the then-all-white police jury refused to take out a bond to put a sewer system in an area that was, that was exploding population. Those citizens, by the grace of God, was able to establish the very first chemical treatment plant in the parish of Caddo, including the city of Shreveport. The city of Shreveport was still, and the parish was still contaminating the Red River all the way up into the nineties, I believe. And another point on, as I close, and another point on Dr. Edward Jones. It was in nineteen seventy-two, along with Hershey D. Wilson, Dr. C.M. Lester, and Reverend H.M. Flint, that, that was voted into the, this police jury. They broke, him and those three men broke a hundred and thirty-four.
I think he's trying to wrap up.
Yes, sir. Give me thirty seconds, Mr. President. This is, this is critical. Those four men, along with Dr. Edward Jones, broke a hundred and thirty-four-year blockage of black representation on this commission. Commissioner Gatewatz, it was another six years that, that former police jury Shirley Wills broke this, this horseshoe. So we shouldn't dis, we shouldn't despair the names of men like Dr. Edward Jones, because it hurts us as a people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muhammad. All right, now we are back at communiques and reports, is that right, Mr. Clerk?
Correct.
Anybody back on the, Mr.?
Can I make a motion, go back into?
Oh, yeah. Make a motion, can we have a motion to come back into regular session?
No moves.
A motion by Commissioner Young.
Second.
No, no, there may be some other comments. I think the second came from Commissioner Stormy Gatewatz. Are we all in acclamation to come back into regular session? Okay. Back into regular session, we have communiques and reports, second time around. Commissioner Chavez.
Thank you, President. The first one, I didn't say this earlier, because I know the first one's always about agenda items to speak on, so this wasn't on the agenda, but today, I thought it was really cool, and, and I was gonna, I didn't want to steal Commissioner Epperson's thunder, because I know he was the director of the Northwest Louisiana Veteran Cemetery, had I known he was not going to be here. Today, we were able to lay to rest thirteen veterans that had been at the coroner's office for some almost twelve years, because they couldn't identify family members, but with the help of the Caddo Parish coroner, they identified who they were, their ages, and today, the citizens of Shreveport, Bozier, even as, as far as Texas came out to, to celebrate these veterans and pay their respects and lay them to rest, and it was a very, very, just amazing experience to see all four branches represented, and each one of those branches offered their full military honors, complete with three volleys, folding the flag, and presenting the flag, to stand-in family members to honor those thirteen individuals that served this country, and it was a really cool event. I was, I was happy to take part of it. I saw a lot of other people there, and, and I kid you not when I say people came out to support it. It was probably about a hundred and fifty citizens that showed up for these, for these soldiers, for these Navy, for these airmen, for these Marines that had no one to show up for them. So it was a great event. It was nice seeing Caddo Parish put together. There was a professional photographer, Dr. Wilson, gave them our card. They're going to send some pictures from the event to forward over, so we can put them out. That's all, President. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chavez. Attorney Frazier?
Commissioners, I just needed to update you that we got a second Attorney General's opinion request from Representative McCormick that we needed to respond to. We got the, the response out yesterday, and so we'll forward you a copy of those questions and the response. And I just want to make sure that you all know that Mr. Bernstein has been mostly instrumental in the research and response on that, so I just wanted to appreciate him publicly for his work on that.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Attorney Frazier. Commissioner Johnson?
Can you explain that again? Representative McCormick is sending us questions?
He did not send it to us. He requested a second Attorney, Attorney General's opinion, and we were given an opportunity to respond to the questions he presented in his opinion.
Okay. When you say a second, is that additional questions?
That is additional to what we've given you all previously.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, is that it, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
One quick thing, I just wanted to publicly thank Facilities and Maintenance for delivering the Mass Two Oak Parks theme for me on yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stormy Gatewatz.
Move to adjourn.
All right, second. We're adjourned. Thank you all.